Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council is reconvening from closed session. And to report out by a vote of 5-0, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Freenow versus City of Elk Grove Sacramento Superior Court, case number 34-2020-00285195. And at this point, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of the City Council at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the second special meeting of the City Council to order on Wednesday, November the 18th at 6:00 PM. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Consistent with executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. Meeting location will be the City Council chamber, but it will not be open to the public. This meeting in the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, November 20th at 1:00 PM and Monday, November 23rd at 6:00 PM. It's being closed captioned and will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. City Clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. With that, Mayor, that will take us into our agenda.
All right, go ahead and do the roll call, please.
For the roll call and for our teleconference meetings, we do all of the votes through a verbal roll call. And so I'll be starting for the roll call, the verbal process here, starting with Council Member Nguyen.
Here.
Council Member Hume.
Here.
Council Member Suon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. All right, next item is a Pledge of Allegiance. And where you are at, if you could address the United States flag accordingly, and if you could join me in the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, everyone. And next item.
That will take us to item 1.3, the moment of silence.
And Council members, you probably have read in the news already, but Folsom Vice Mayor Ernie Sheldon has passed away. And if it would please the Council, I'd like to adjourn in his honor. He's dedicated a number of years to Folsom, and this will be a good opportunity for us to pay our colleague north of us some respect.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
All right, thank you, thank you, members. And so at the beginning of every council meeting, the Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. And while you join us in a moment of silence, please certainly think about Vice Mayor Ernie Sheldon's family and make sure that you have his family and your thoughts. Please join us. And let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 2, approval of the agenda.
Okay, members, we have an agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before we approve the agenda, I was just curious whether or not it would make sense to move item 10.3 to the December council meeting when there's the reorganization of the council and deal with the ad hoc appointments at that time?
That is a very good suggestion. I would support that.
A quick point of clarification just to the council for that item, Council Member Hume and Mayor Lee, that is just for the continuance of those items. It's not actually about who's appointed to them, and that would return and is scheduled for return for who's appointed to the ad hocks in the December 9th meeting. But this is just for the ones for them to continue.
My apologies, I moved the agenda then.
Okay.
Got a motion in seconds? Roll call vote?
For the roll call vote on the approval of the agenda, Council Member Nguyen.
Yes.
Council Member Hume.
Aye.
Council Member Suon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And with a 5-0 vote, we have an agenda.
All right, let's move to the next item.
For Section 3, the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular on the this special agenda. That will take us on to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And with that, we will be starting with item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring November 2020 as Native American Heritage Month. And I believe currently staff are coordinating in to have on call representatives from Wilton Rancheria. That includes Chairman Tarango, Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman Caldwell, Tribal Council spokesperson Hudson, Tribal Council Vice spokesperson Singh, and council members from Wilton Rancheria.
Okay, once you get them on, let me know, because you will be reading the proclamation.
The callers are on the line.
All right, welcome, everyone. You know, it's the City Council has prepared a proclamation, and let me go ahead and read it before we jump to any remarks, okay? The proclamation is Native American Heritage Month, November 2020. Whereas Native American Heritage Month celebrates and recognizes accomplishments of the peoples who were the original inhabitants and explorers and settlers of the United States. And for a millennium before Europeans settled in North America, the indigenous people of this continent flourished with vibrant cultures, were the original stewards of the land from generations to generation. Invaluable cultural knowledge and rich traditions were handed down, which continue to thrive in Native America, American communities across our country today. Whereas, as the first to live on this land, Native Americans and their tradition and values continue to inspire the ideals of self-governance and determination that are the frameworks of all communities. And whereas fostering pride in the languages, tradition, and practices that make up the extraordinary richness of a Native American culture as center to a shared progress, reaffirming a commitment to ensure each generation is versed with appreciation for the past while inspired to forge a brighter future of progress and hope in our communal landscape. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims November 2020 as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Elk Grove and urges all residents to take time to gain a deeper understanding of the diverse heritage of Native Americans, strengthen the preservation of Native American history, art, language, literature, anthropology, and culture, and renew awareness and appreciation, working as partners with Native Americans to build sustainable and healthy communities. Signed on this 18th day of November 2020 by the whole entire City Council. Thank you, members of the tribe. I'm glad you're here. Would you like to make some remarks?
Yes, I would. Majuscet, Majuscetuka, Oyaset, Jesus Tarango, Chairman of the Wilton Rancheria. On behalf of my people and community, I would like to thank you and extend our gratitude for your proclamation and for acknowledging and honoring our community's contribution and existence for Native American Heritage Month. As the stewards of these lands, we have often been overlooked and unheard, yet I see the change in the wind and that cities, counties, and states embrace the acknowledgement of land and the truths of the past as we know them. We are truly humbled by this proclamation and look forward to our continued relationships with the City of Elk Grove. Sanguikomo. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to congratulate the chairman on his new role and new position.
All right, members, any remarks?
Yeah, hey, this is Pat Hume. Haven't seen you in a while. Congratulations on your new role and look forward to hopefully great things for the tribe as well as the larger Elk Grove community starting 2021.
Absolutely, brother. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Council Member Nguyen. Congratulations again. It's too bad we can't be there to see you and all of your members in person. I really, you know, this month here, my daughter started learning about Native Americans, and we got a chance to sit down and read through and learn so much about it, and she asked a lot of questions. When I saw this come up, I wish that we had this meeting in person so that she can watch it. She actually watches our council meeting so that she can see all of you, and so that way she could possibly even have some questions that she can ask, because she has yet to meet somebody that is of Native American descent, and so I hope one day that can happen when this is all over.
Yes, I do believe that, too, and I think that there's definitely an opportunity for my tribe and, you know, the City of Elk Grove to hopefully in the future, you know, put something together to where the tribe could come out and share and maybe even educate, you know, some of our city folks here about our people and about the things that we did and continue to still do today. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mayor Lee. I just want to say, haven't had a chance to sit down with you for lunch or dinner, so after this COVID, let's go ahead and do that.
That sounds like a plan to me, Mayor. Thank you.
Right, anyone else? Right, seeing that no one else has any additional remarks, let's go ahead and move to the next item. I've asked Council Member Nguyen to take the lead on this.
The next item is item 4.2, which is a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of Kusunus River College. And currently, right now, staff are just making that patch through connection, and we are hoping to make a connection with college president Dr. Edward Bush. And staff will be making that connection and connecting Dr. Bush into the call here soon.
Dr. Bush is on the line.
Wonderful, thank you. So on behalf of the entire City Council, we have a recognition here that I'd like to read, and it states, "Whereas Kusunus River College opened its doors on September 14th, 1970, with almost 2,000 students taking day and evening classes. Tasked with providing high-quality education to the residents of the South Sacramento County region, and over the last half-century, Kusunus River College has educated more than a quarter of a million students. And whereas Kusunus River College has become one of the most ethnically diverse two-year public college in the country, actively addressing the racial inequalities in higher education, and respecting and acknowledging the original indigenous people pursuing in an ongoing relationship with the Miwok and Nisian people. And whereas Kusunus River College continues to provide groundbreaking innovative solutions to ensure each student that attends class at the campus is ready to transfer and/or begin a career, including the establishment of the Elk Grove Center where students can fulfill their goal of transferring by completing all of their general education courses in a smaller environment. Whereas Kusunus River College looks forward to providing another 50 years of quality education and providing support to our community. Now therefore, and be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby extends its congratulations and recognizes the 50th anniversary of Kusunus River College and its role in educating the residents of Elk Grove, providing community resources and delivering a well-educated workforce to support a better economic future to its students and its families." Signed this 18th day of November 2020 by the entire City Council. About 20 years ago, I, while I was going to SAC State, I also took a few classes at CRC, and I enjoyed it, because not only were the professors and the instructors there pleasant to work with, but they took the time to get to know each and every single one of the students. And so I was, I was reading this, I thought how true of this 20 years ago, and now to this day, how it's just have grown so much. And so Dr. Bush, congratulations to you and your team on this 50th anniversary, and we look forward to another 50 years, as we stated on here.
Thank you, Council Member Nguyen. Want to acknowledge and extend my gratitude as well to Mayor Lee and the rest of the members of the City Council. My name is Dr. Edward Bush, and I have the privilege of serving as President of Kusunus River College for the last 50 years, who have been deeply committed and dedicated to providing, I think, responsive and timely career technical and academic education for citizens of South Sacramento and Elk Grove. And so we're really proud to be acknowledged by the city, and thank you for the recognition, and also believe that it is fitting that we are recognized in the same day, in the same month as Native American History Month. As noted in the resolution, we enjoy a deep connection to the Miwok and Nisian communities in Wilton Rancheria. And so I think it was really fortunate that, given our interconnected history, that even stems directly into the naming of our institution for us to be acknowledged in the same evening. So really just want to extend our gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding partnership and relationship that Kusunus River College has with the City of Elk Grove. So thank you so much for this recognition. It means a lot to my entire institution.
President Bush, this is Mayor Lee. You know, when you first moved into this community, I've had an opportunity to sit down with you, and I saw that what you took to college is pretty astronomical to the next level. And so I want to continue to say that you're on the right track, and, you know, I hope that you continue this pathway and continue to do good things for our community and for the college.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Council Member Hume. Ed, I just wanted to say, congratulations to you on the anniversary. You know, Kusunus River College really is an asset to the larger Elk Grove community, and we certainly are happy and look forward to expansion of the Elk Grove satellite campus to continue making that education attainable to all of our graduating students. And so congratulations to you and congratulations to the school, and thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Hume, and you all will be invited to that groundbreaking ceremony, so we're definitely looking forward to that expansion.
All right, excellent. Members, if there's nothing else, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you, President Bush.
Okay.
That will take us on to Section 5, public comment. Participating members, the viewing audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of the interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less for large number of requests received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those participating members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. And with that, Mayor, I'd just like to note for general public comment, we did not receive any written comments for this 6:00 PM start special meeting of November 18th, but we do have five members of the public signed up to be called in, and our staff are pulling them into the meeting environment now, and we should have them coming up here soon.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. Tonight, I would like to just address Mayor Steve Lee. Mayor Lee, even though the people of Elk Grove made a different choice this election for mayor, you have served the constituents of Elk Grove with pride and to the best of your abilities. When I say this, I believe I speak for many others who appreciate you. We're grateful for a mayor that holds this city and its residents at the highest regard. You have demonstrated that leadership is an opportunity to serve and not a trumpet call to self-importance. And as always, you ran a clean, honest campaign based on your merits with focus on issues that matter to our community. This, too, shows your dedication to the people before personal purpose. You've always said that the mayor will speak if the people speak, and until we, the people, vote you out, you'd happily continue to serve us. Humility is a characteristic that exists few and far between government officials, of which you do not lack. Perhaps that is what makes you different from others and sets you apart. We need more of that in our public service, locally and nationally. At first, I was disheartened by your loss in this election, and I realized that this loss, in more ways than one, is a blessing and maybe an opportunity for you to go beyond this. Having seen what you endured the last five months of a vicious mayor campaign littered with baseless accusations, racism, and vitriol, not to mention a waste-of-time failed center, I'm thankful you don't have to deal with it anymore. You demonstrated great tolerance, courage, calm, and poise throughout all this. That's a victory in itself. Such a loss is no loss, but a victory of dignity and integrity. Even in defeat, you continue to teach and remind us all what true leadership is. I fear Elk Grove is really going to miss you. Mayor Lee, I wish you and your family the best. We will always remember your kindness, fortitude, humility, and loyalty to the people. Thank you for your service on the school board and city council. May your journey, whatever it may be and wherever it takes you, resonate with the character you built and upheld over the last decade, caring and helping others. God bless you. Thank you.
And thank you, Speaker. I believe that concluded their comments, and that will take us to our second speaker under Section 5, public comment. I think we have that caller online, and we're just a matter of making the connection into the meeting environment.
You can go ahead now.
Thank you. Mayor and council members across the nation, many drivers are getting arrested and charged for driving upon or into protesters. On September 29th, during the mayor debate at the Barbara Waxler Community Center at approximately 7:00 PM, Jacob Lindell Ramble charged out a group of protesters with a silver Mercedes SUV, and upon exiting his vehicle, he said, "I should just run them over." On October 1st, one of the protesters attempted to file a police report in regard to the situation. However, Lieutenant Eric White discouraged her from filing. Lieutenant White stated that a sergeant with the Elk Grove Police Department had already reviewed the footage and that the actions of Jacob Lindell Ramble did not rise to the level of crime and that he knew him. However, right here at home last week, a Sacramento judge determined that a shopping cart can kill and recognized it as a deadly weapon. If shopping carts can kill, I am sure that a vehicle can and will cause great bodily injuries and/or death, and should be recognized by the Elk Grove Police Department as a deadly weapon. The protester dismissed Lieutenant White's claim and was able to get in a report. The report again was dismissed, and the actions of Jacob Ramble were swept under the rug once more. An email was sent to Chief Albright demanding answers as the people are still seeking justice for the protesters who were traumatized with fear as a direct result of Jacob Ramble's action. As of today, an investigation has been launched and is underway, but what is concerning is that the detective handling the case has stated that she has been unable to trace the footage, as Lieutenant White claimed to have been reviewed by a sergeant in the Elk Grove Police Department. See, city attorney, mayor, city council, and city manager, how many cases or reports have the local Elk Grove Police Department swept under the rug to protect a friend or someone they knew? How many complaints were dismissed to protect someone they knew? How many people have been discouraged from filing a police report to protect someone they knew? The actions of several individuals in the Elk Grove Police Department is concerning. Your continuous efforts to turn a blind eye to complaints, concerns, and the voices of the people leaves me to believe that there have been more. On March 12th, 2020, in a Sacramento Bee article, Chief Albright said, and I quote, "The trust from our community is critical to our success, and that trust is built through transparency." Mayor, incoming mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney, and Chief Albright, tonight, I'm letting you know that we are watching you. We will make sure that you do the right thing. Do not forget the oath you took when you stepped into your position. If this means arresting and charging your friend, do it. No one is above the law. Thank you.
And I believe that concluded the Speaker's comments. That will take us to our third speaker, signed up under Section 5, general public comment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
City council members, Elk Grove was established as a no-place-for-hate community back in 2016, and a forum was created to encourage Elk Grove residents to engage in conversations on issues of race relations and implicit bias. Though in the home community tried to have these conversations over the course of the last several months, we were shut out by the fake news media and by elected officials here in Elk Grove, including you, city council members. Our concerns were politicized and dismissed by those who once claimed that issues of racism are not political. Back in July 2019, you established a Diversity and Inclusion Commission with the goal of educating the public on multiculturalism and other things. Was the only home mayor in America on his way out, and a known racist coming in to take his place? I'm concerned about the further marginalization of the home community by not only the new mayor, but by her supporters and her associates. For those of us who've been on the receiving end of a racism, it's undeniable that an elected official's racist statement targeting the home has spawned a new wave of hatred against the home community right here in Elk Grove. I've seen it on social media, and I've read about it in mainstream news. Take that out of Seattle's most ardent supporters, Jake Ramble, for example. He is an administrative law judge, and he's currently under investigation for using his vehicle to intimidate and instill fear into peaceful protesters on the night of the mayor debate back in September. One of the victims that evening was my eight-year-old son, who said he was scared for his life, that he overheard Jake Ramble's state, that he wished he could have rammed us over. So my question to you, city council members, is this. When Mayor Steve Lee leaves office and you have no one else to blame, what will you do? What have you done other than showcase your complicity in the racism that has been perpetrated against the home community with their silence and endorsement of a racist? Here's one suggestion. The Diversity and Inclusion Commission does not have any home members on its committee. You can start backtracking your complicity by appointing a home individual to that committee. Stephanie Nguyen, it was you who once had the audacity to demand that home clan leaders put together a public platform to educate Elk Grove about our culture, and that essentially we were the ones who needed to prove ourselves to you. But the responsibility to educate is on you. People of color and victims of racism do not owe you any type of conversation about race. After one elected official and their fake news media friend has put the home community through, we can no longer trust you with our stories, with our emotions, and with our truth. So what are you going to do? Because I can tell you one thing, the home community is not done with this conversation.
Your time's up.
And that would take us on to our fourth speaker under Section 5, general public comment. I think we're making that connection.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove, your cell antenna expert. Mayor Lee, thank you for your service to the city and to the community. You've displayed an unparalleled commitment to protecting Elk Grove residents by keeping cell antennas away from our Elk Grove homes. You've been the most responsive of all the council members willing to listen and hear me out. You've also, along with the council, protected the city from being overrun by cellphone carriers, as happens in other California cities. You served as the moderator along with Supervisor Don Natoli for the Symposium on 5G EMF and your health that we had right there in the council chambers last June. I appreciate your service to the city and wish you all the best. All right, other subjects. Last week, council, I sued the school district for a writ of mandamus to place my proposed agenda item, which is about new cell antennas near schools, on the agenda of a regular school board meeting. Also, at the last meeting, October 28th, I asked the council to prohibit strand-mounted cell antennas and air gig in the public right-of-way, and there were two council members that responded to my texts that said, "You were going to check with the city attorney and find out if the city has the power to do that," because we're talking about antennas that are mounted on elevated power lines. I did not hear back from you, so please follow up, ask the city attorney what the city can do to prohibit these things and do that. Thank you. Recently, I learned from the Public Works Department that the city received three m- Recently, I learned from the Public Works Department that the city received three more applications for new cell antenna permits, two from Verizon and one from AT&amp;T. Each of them covers five more new cell antennas. Now, the city has already approved but not yet issued permits for six new cell antennas near schools. A new cell antenna near a school will cause students to use their phones more while at school, exactly as the carriers want them to do. This will take students' minds and attention away from their classes. So, Councilmember Sun, thank you for responding to my recent email. When I asked you what is your position on new cell antennas near schools, I did not ask you to quote-unquote "dispute" our city attorney. The difference here is between what is allowed and what is a good idea. The city attorney tells the council what is allowed, required, and prohibited. He does not tell the council what is a good idea. That is not his job. For example, one is allowed to smoke a pack of cigarettes every day, but that does not make it a good idea. The council's job is to study an issue and decide what is a good idea, meaning what is good for the city and its residents. With that in mind, and this is a question for each council member and the city manager, what is your position on new cell antennas near schools? Why, in your words, is it a good idea? Now, I'm not asking this for myself. I do not have children. But who would want to know? The Elk Grove Unified School District has 60,000 students. The parents want to know. The principals want to know, and the teachers want to know. The council is making policy decisions that will affect the educational progress and the health of students, and for all of these folks, you should take a position.
Good times on, Mr. Graham. Thank you.
And state your reason for it. Thank you.
And with that, that will take us to our final speaker under Section 5, General Public Comment, and we're just trying to make that connection. And I think for our last caller, we were not able to make that connection. With that, that is going to conclude our request to call in for the city council meeting for Section 5, General Public Comment.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Let's move to the next item.
That would take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is Jason Bearman, City Manager. Several items to report on this evening. First, the city was recently granted $5,000 by the Lake California Cities and other cities for a workforce health grant program. Program focuses on improving the health of employees and is supported by Kaiser, Keenan Associates, and the Health of the Eating Active Living Heal Cities Campaign. Elk Grove has been a heal city since September 2011. The city recently received the highest rating of any jurisdiction in the region by the Insurance Services Office, ISO. ISO ratings are used by the insurance industry to determine property insurance rates and identify building safety best practices. Elk Grove's rating is directly attributed to the professional staffing and services provided by the city's Building Permit Services Provider, Inner West Consulting, and our own Development Services Department. Congratulations, Development Services. The city will be hosting an online workshop tomorrow, November 19th, at 4:30 PM, to discuss a plan to transition to a greener, cleaner, zero-emission bus fleet. This workshop will explain why the city is preparing this plan and present preliminary plans and research findings. More information can be found on the Transit Division's webpage at www.etran.org. City of Elk Grove is currently seeking proposals to beautify two utility boxes in the city. Hard work will be displayed on utility boxes at the northwest corner of Elk Grove Boulevard, Franklin Boulevard, and the southeast corner of Bruceville Boulevard at Whitelock Parkway. Artists must be resident of Sacramento County. Proposals must be submitted on or before December 17th, and details can be found on the city's website. We're introducing a new opportunity out of District 56 in the form of the Memorial Bench Program that offers a chance for the community to honor a loved one, friend, special event or organization with a special amenity inside the preserve at District 56. Anyone can sponsor one of the 23 benches designated for the program for an investment of $3,000. Fees include the cost for the bench, installation, 10 years of maintenance, and a personalized cast bronze plaque. This opportunity is limited, and applications will be considered on a first-come, first-served basis. Details can be found on the District 56 website. We're all staying home for the holidays this year, but doesn't mean we can't share some holiday cheer. The city is introducing new activities in collaboration with community partners to help make local spirits bright: a citywide holiday light tour, a special holiday outdoor market at District 56, and a chance to send a holiday smile to an Elk Grove senior. Our ways, our community, can connect and celebrate the season. Details about these opportunities are now available on the city's website and on social media channels. In accordance with City Holiday, City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th, in observance of Thanksgiving. Etran Services will run on a modified schedule that week. Neighborhood trash and recycling services remain on their normal schedule. We all know that Sacramento County, as well as much of the state, has gone back to purple tier as cases continue to climb rapidly. This means modifications to operations throughout the city, a lot of changes from indoor to outdoor-only operations, and so this is just a reminder for everybody to continue to take this seriously: wear masks, social distance, and do everything that you can to stay safe and healthy, especially during the flu season that we're entering into right now. Just a couple of quick updates on some of our active COVID-19 programs. One is Great Plates. It continues to be a great source of success and pride in our community. Again, this delivers senior meals to hundreds of seniors daily. There are currently over 473 seniors, and 18 restaurants participate in the program. More than 150,000 meals have been delivered since the program's launch on May 13th. As of November 13th, Great Plates has invested more than $2.8 million in local restaurants here in Elk Grove. A new extension has the program running until December 8th. And then finally, our COVID-19 Small Business Recovery Grant Program has closed, and final payments are being processed. After two rounds of funding, we have issued 112 grants to small businesses totaling over $458,000 based on 367 local Elk Grove employees. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Are there any questions for the city manager? Seeing that there is no members that have any questions, let's go ahead and move to the next item.
That'll be Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, members, if you would indulge me, I'd like to go first, considering that this is my last meeting, and, you know, it's a little bit bittersweet that I will be leaving, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the people of Elk Grove, particularly those in the city. It has been an honor and privilege to serve as your mayor, as a former council member, and also trustee for Elk Grove Unified. As I've always said, any elected office is for the people and by the people, and every elected serve at your discretion. And I still and will always believe that this great country is built by the people and continue to engage in the political process because, as an elected, electeds do need your input. So thank you for providing me a privilege of a lifetime. Now, the other thing I'd like to mention is specific to the city staff. As I've always said before, because of your commitment to the city of Elk Grove, you make it easy for many of us that's on the dais. You are an amazing group of people, and because of your good work, you make the city council, you make me look good. And so the city of Elk Grove, I know, is in great hands because of your dedication and hard work, and I know you will provide the direction necessary for the council to continue to do great work for our beautiful city. I will always be grateful that I've had the privilege to work with each and every one of you in building and moving this great city forward. Thank you all of you, city staff, for what you do. To the council members, let me start off with Councilmember Hume. I've always paid compliments as to how well-dressed you are and how witty you are. I've always, you know, prior to being on the council, I've always admired you for being cordial and being very respectable, and I will miss that most about you. To Councilmember Sun, your engineering skills has always been an asset to this council, and I am resting assured that your engineering mind will continue to guide this council and provide a perspective that's a little bit, you know, different and from an engineer's standpoint. And Councilwoman Stephanie Nguyen, I think you and I have probably known each other the longest of everyone, and I have to say it's been a distinct honor to have the opportunity to work with you again in this capacity. And I save the best for last, Vice Mayor. I think there's no secret that when we disagree, we disagree passionately, but one thing I appreciate about my twin brother is that we always come around and we always come to terms with our differences. And so, if anything, I will miss interacting with all of you most, and I know that for the three remaining council members, I know that you guys make good decisions, and you make decisions in the best interest of Elk Groveans. So best of luck, but I wanted to take this opportunity to say a few words to each and every one of you. Thank you all for the opportunity. All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next member. Let's start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, sir. Well, you kind of threw us at a curveball here, saying that this is your last meeting. I want to thank you for your service and commitment to our community, your leadership and influence in the community. Of all the years that you've worked in the community really showed through. It was always strong. We always knew that, but within the last few weeks, we really felt that and we saw that, as you had so many supporters not only call in, but also walked in favor of you as well, too. You put Elk Grove on the map as being the first Hmong mayor here. You put us on the map, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I hope that this isn't the end for you. I hope that, as a leader in the community, working with all of us, I hope that we can continue to work together because, as you heard in the last few calls, the Hmong community needs a leader, the Hmong community needs you, the Hmong community goes to you, and that you can also mentor and guide others as well, too, through all the things that you've done. And so thank you again for your commitment, for your passion for leading the community and working alongside with all of us. I'll wave the rest of my report.
Thank you, member. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and handle business first. Had an RT meeting, nothing to report. On Tuesday, the 10th, I participated in the Diversity and Inclusion Commission's Virtual Dewali, or Festival of Lights, and that was a fantastic event that was underwritten by the Gentasewa Group, so I want to thank them for doing that. It was nice that even in these unprecedented times that we could still take that moment to try and drive some light into the darkness of the world. Thursday morning, I had an opportunity to go out and tour the railroad street property and all of the progress that's being made out there, and so I just wanted to thank staff that's been involved in that, particularly the staff of Daryl Doan, Rachel Brown, and Jason Bearman that met me out there to tour that. It's really turning up to be a truly, I think, a game changer for Old Town and for a destination property, and so I'm excited to see that happening. That afternoon was the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. I'll let Chair Sun report on that. I had a paratransit meeting Monday where I can say that both Councilmember Hume and I have been reappointed to continue to serve on that board. We had a sanitation board district this morning, and the mayor was there as well, and nothing to report from that. And then I have a San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting Friday. I think, now to speak kind of to what the mayor led off with here, I think it's a sign of the times, but it's still an unfortunate reality that this moment is lost via a computer screen and only doing this electronically. Mayor, frankly, you deserve better than that, and I would really appreciate the opportunity to be able to see you face-to-face and eye-to-eye in this moment because, first of all, let me back up and thank you for those compliments that you paid me. I try and be those things as best I can, but I hope that you can also appreciate that even, as you mentioned about the Vice Mayor, when we disagree on policy or on happenings, I've tried to approach that from a teachable moment and not attack you personally or do anything untoward, but to try and demonstrate maybe a different way to address some of these issues. And so I wish you the best. I think you have modeled excellent behavior for your sons, and I think that that's a great thing for you to be able to stand tall and show them. And again, as Stephanie said, I hope you can bring some healing to your own community as well as to the larger community as we move forward, both here locally, statewide, and nationally. And so I wish you the best, and I wish I could say that in person.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll follow suit and do quick business first. We had a Sacramento Council of Governments Transportation Committee meeting, nothing to report. For the Sacramento Transportation Authority, we did extend an offer for an executive officer. We'll announce that shortly in the near future. I think it's a very good candidate. The entire board was able to interview the three final candidates, who I think all were fantastic. So anyway, we'll look forward to working with this new person very soon. And then finally, tomorrow, we have Sacramento Area Council of Governments Board meeting and the Library Authority Budget Committee meeting. Mr. Mayor, I also want to thank you for your service, and it's been great working with you on the council. I think we've agreed more than not on policies. As you, anyone can, I think, look back, in this entire council, our votes have been pretty consistent. So I think, while, you know, Councilmember Hume, you yourself, Mayor, mentioned a couple maybe policy disagreements, but I think for the most part, this council has agreed on pretty much all things for city business. I think we share a common experience in our attempt to represent the city to the best of our ability, and for you, I commend you for your willingness to serve, and I do look forward to working with you ongoing in the community as well. And I want to thank you again for your service and wish we could be in person for this, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Detrick.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all the council members and the mayor for joining me with a $1,000 donation for the Elk Grove Food Bank Turkey Drive. This is the first year that we've all joined in on it, but this is the first year we've all raised the bar and donated such a high amount, which has been a huge success and which we'll have the actual distribution to those that qualified and who've signed up this weekend. And nothing's more powerful than the opportunity to give day in and day out, and I really, really wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for your support for the Elk Grove Food Bank. And then for you, Mr. Mayor, you know, we've had the opportunity since pretty much day one, had an opportunity to joust from the dais. You know, we'd laugh, shed some tears at times, but it's all done with honor and, you know, hopefully it was done with a high level of respect and care. I think one thing that is no doubt, which is mentioned earlier about how you've brought notoriety to Elk Grove with you being the first elected Hmong mayor in the United States and have shown to be a role model for your Hmong community for what they can achieve. And that, believe me, doesn't go, obviously doesn't go unnoticed in the Hmong community, but has not gone unnoticed nationwide. And, you know, even with the differences, you know, that's part of the democratic process of coming up with different ideas and hopefully... of coming up with different ideas. And hopefully, at the end of our deliberation, we collectively came up with a better solution or a better project than we started with. So I think if we were all clones and just sat there and copied one another, I think that would be a disservice to our city and to our residents and businesses. And Mayor, you've had an opportunity to be arm in arm with us for some phenomenal projects, to see the changes that we've seen go with the city, with the animal shelter and aquatic center and civic center, now the nature preserve that's going under construction and the improvements down on Railroad Avenue. You know, we have a lot to be really, really proud of, and you're definitely part of that. And I'm honored to be able to share those accomplishments with you. And I've mentioned it before, I consider you a friend. And I still feel that way today and look forward to hopefully maintaining a friendship as we both separate from the council and have an opportunity to socialize with our families. As was mentioned, I'm very, very disappointed how the community treated you and your family during this election. I've been the recipient as well, and boy, it's no fun as the elected official, but it's even sadder that our families have to go through it. And very, very sad that you went through that, but you have held your head high and come out the other side. And I think you're going to be a better man as you move forward and look forward to see big things for me in the future. That's all I have.
Thank you, members. Those are very kind words, and I do appreciate it. And, you know, for me leaving the council, it doesn't mean I've left the community. Please continue to do great work. And in the event that you need, you know, any support, any resources, please don't be a stranger and let me know. So I appreciate all of you. And, you know, I know we are in good hands with the leadership at City Hall.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
This is the city manager, if you just indulge me for one minute.
Sure.
First of all, I wanted to thank you for what you said about working with city staff. The feeling is mutual. We've enjoyed a great relationship with you. And I appreciate you acknowledging and recognizing all the hard work of staff here and the relationship that we've enjoyed for these past several years. Wanted to just acknowledge how much we appreciate how supportive you've been over the time and the fact that you've always acknowledged and appreciated the work that's done at City Hall. It doesn't go unnoticed. It's been a true pleasure working with you, and we wish you nothing but the best. And on behalf of all staff, we appreciate you and appreciate your service, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Appreciate that. All right, shall we move to the next item?
With that, that will take us to Section 8, Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, at this point, I want to go ahead and open for a public comment. Is there any members of the public side to speak, Mr. Lindgren?
We do have one caller that has requested to call in on Item 8.18, but there are no written comments that were submitted for the consent calendar. I'll have staff patch that member of the public through for their comments on Item 8.18.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. Thank you. This is Eric Christen from the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. I just wanted to thank the council for their hard work representing everybody's interests on this issue. It's a contentious and divisive issue, as we've explained from the Coalition for Fair Employment standpoint. We believe PLAs are discriminatory, divisive, unnecessary, and costly. And you have actually listened to both sides, not just proponents, but also opponents of PLAs. And we want to encourage, continue to encourage, an inclusive process in this very, very important decision. All workers, all apprentices, all contractors need to be represented. And so, yeah, just one of those rare public comments where I'm praising the council. And thank you again for your time and dedication to hearing from all sides on PLAs and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Sounds like I concluded the speaker's comments, and that was our only speaker under the consent calendar items.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And Council of Liberation and Direction, members.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Hume.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm happy to move the consent, but I'd like to make a comment on Item 8.16, if I may.
Go ahead.
Great. So 8.16 is the authorizing to enter into the contract with George Reed, Inc. for the Grantline Road, Section B2 of the Connector Widening Project from Waterman to Moser Road. I just want to thank all of the staff that were involved in this. I want to thank George Reed for submitting an engineer's, or a bid that came in under the engineer's estimate. And thank Public Works for working with Connector JPA staff to be sure that the, to the extent we could afford it, that the project is, fits within the larger connector design guidelines. And I look forward to seeing this first stretch come out of the ground. So thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Councilmember Sun. I want to second that motion and just add on, you know, there's a few items on consent tonight pertaining to the connector, the others dealing with properties for Cammer Road. And so I want to echo that sentiment. I'm just, this is a project we, as a council, have identified as our number one infrastructure priority. And it's just great to see it continuing to progress forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, there's a motion, a second. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to also, you know, this is another one of those items that ties into what we just talked about earlier, that the accomplishments that we're trying, we either have done or in the middle of or moving forward. And obviously, it's the teamwork with our city, with our council, and with all of our regional partners to be able to pull all this together. And I think everybody's got to tip a hat to one another for the joint effort that's gone into this and how long it's been in the works to see these things potentially moving forward, the reality of these great projects coming on to hopefully improve the movement around the city and for people that are commuting up and down the different corridors, as well as for the potential of businesses along those corridors. So thank you.
Very well said, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? All right, seeing nobody else, let's go ahead. We have a motion second. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
And for that, it's the approval of the consent calendar as presented for that roll call vote. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Consent calendar will pass 5-0.
All right, excellent. Let's move to the next item.
That'll move us through Section 9, the public hearings, as we have no public hearings scheduled for this evening. And it'll take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with Item 10.1, which is Consider a Resolution Approving the Artwork Proposals Selected by the Review Panel and Recommended by the Arts Commission for Oasis Park and the Preserve at District 56, and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Contracts with the Respective Artists.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager. I'm pleased tonight to bring forward two recommendations for artwork. The city continues to invest in public art in our community, which is important to the quality of life. This evening, we will be considering artwork for Oasis Park and the Preserve at District 56. I'm now going to turn it over to Shelley Willis, our Art Management Consultant, to complete the presentation. Jason, can you verify that you can see my screen?
We can see it.
Perfect. Shelley, are you on board? Are you muted?
I'm here. Can you hear me? All right. So thank you, Lana, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Lana said, I'll be presenting artwork proposals for Oasis Park and the Preserve. I'd like to start by talking with you a little bit about the process. So Lana, if you can go to the next slide. So both of these projects, both of these proposals were selected by the same panel. The panel guides the entire selection process for the projects. This panel included Liz Irons and Leslie Sandifer, who are both City of Elk Grove Arts Commissioners. It included Liv Mo, who's the Executive Director of Verge Center for the Arts. She's also an artist. Chris Dobear, who is an artist and a former art professor at Sacramento City Community College for many, many years. Sherry Noblet was the final panelist. She's the Senior Landscape Architect for Kusuma's Community Services District. Go ahead, Lana. So the selection process began back in January of 2020. We did an open call for artists nationally. We received 51 applications for Oasis Community Park and 26 applications for the Preserve. The panelists narrowed down those applications to three finalists for each project in May. The finalists went back to the drawing board and they created their proposals, and then they were interviewed by the panel. And the panelists looked at all of their proposals, and they unanimously selected Martin Webb for Oasis Park and Ride Art Studio for the Preserve Nature Center in September. The Arts Commission saw those proposals and approved them unanimously at their meeting on September 24, 2020. So I'd like to start with Martin Webb's proposal for Oasis Park. Martin Webb is originally from England. He received a degree in visual arts, and he returned for a graduate course in art education. He taught high school art for 11 years. He's very smitten with the Bay Area, so he came here to live in 2003. He is a recipient of a Fulbright Fellowship and has created public artworks throughout California. He recently created an interactive art installation as part of the Crocker Art Museum's First Five Program for children ages zero to five. So Martin's proposal is to build four large-scale sculptures for the site that's adjacent to the preschool and the park. The artworks that you can see to the left, a couple of illustrations, but I'll show you a few more in just a sec. They're quite large scale, and they're meant to be dramatic. If you were to stand up these figures, they would be about 10 feet tall. But all of them will be in positions that are sitting or crouching or in different kinds of playful positions that will stand about four feet tall. So you can go to the next slide, Lana. So here's an illustration of where the sculptures will be in the park. As I said, Lana, if you can show them sort of the general area of the sculptures. The red rectangle is the preschool, and the circular area is showing where the sculptures will be placed. As I said, they'll be adjacent to the preschool playground and to the walking, running path that runs right through the park. It's sort of this central sort of pathway for people to walk. If you look at the illustration to the right, that shows a detail of where the sculptures will be. So you can see how close they are to the pathway and to the running path. These are just really general sort of locations for them. If the proposal is approved tonight, then the artists will work closely with landscape architects to really hone in on where those will be placed. Go to the next slide. So the next few slides just show you sort of the whimsical way in which the artist wants to build these sculptures. Those blue figures that you see aren't actually part of the sculpture. They're meant to show you, give you a sense of scale. They are sort of an average size that the artist did some research on, the average size of a young child, three to five, six years old. So you can see how these, you know, these figures are really large scale compared to small children. Go to the next slide. So again, the sculptures are meant to be really joyful and easy to approach. I think they'll also be very distinctive and will become a landmark, not just to the preschool, but to the park. They'll create a real strong sense of identity. You know, I can imagine people who are, you know, meeting people for a run or for a walk, saying, let's meet at those sculptures. And everyone will eventually know exactly where to go. Next slide. So another sort of illustration of how the sculptures might be positioned. The artist was really trying to think about creating sort of these spaces for young children who are visiting the park and at the preschool to play and interact with them. So he also wanted to create spaces for kids to sit and talk and be in the shade, that sort of thing. Next slide. So he's proposing to make these in a really durable marine ply that has been sealed with a protective coating. He'll also create, if you go to the next slide, Lana, he will create these really colorful designs onto the surface of the pieces, and he'll paint those with a high UV stable rated acrylic paint. And as I said, everything will be coated and sealed with a polyurethane that has a life of about two to four years, two on the inside, four on the outside. So they'll have to be recoded every two to four years, depending on how they wear with, you know, the weather and the sun. Next slide. So the panel and the Arts Commission both unanimously approved this. They agreed that the form and the scale and the relationship of the proposed sculptures to the site are really well considered and are going to be very effective. They felt that they were really playful, that they were engaging, that they provided a place for children to play and rest alone or together. But they do recommend that the artist further develop the surface design and color palette so that the, those designs on the surface reflect sort of the nature of the sculptures themselves. So the commission will continue to work with the artists on those surface designs. But know what you're approving tonight is the basic, you know, idea, and that will not significantly change. So at this point, I believe we have the artist, Martin Webb, available and able to join us in the call. So if we can get him on, then between him and Lana and myself, we're happy to answer any of your questions about this project.
Yeah, hi. This is Martin.
Hi, Martin.
Everybody.
So are there any questions?
Any questions?
No questions here. Excited to see it come to fruition.
Great. Good. Martin, did you want to make any comments?
No, I just would like to say thank you, Shelley. You kind of covered everything that I would have wanted to say about the proposal. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the council looking over this design. And I'm eager to get working on it if it's approved.
Thank you. All right. Well, if there aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and walk you through the proposal for the Preserve. So the proposal for the Preserve is by Sayori Eid and Jonathan Russell. Together, they call themselves Ride Art Studio. They're a husband and wife team. They live and work in Berkeley, California. Sayori was born in Osaka, Japan, and she graduated from Sayori was born in Osaka, Japan, and she graduated from the University of New Mexico with an emphasis in sculpture and installation. Jonathan Russell is a professor at the Academy of Art University in San Francisco. He's also the founder of J. Art Casing and the Red Metal Art Studio in San Francisco, California. Together, they started making sculpture in 2011. The two artists established this Ride Art Studio and since they established the studio and began working together, they completed 10 large-scale public art projects. And they work in their studio in Berkeley. They fabricate everything themselves and their work always has this sort of interactive kinetic component to it. They are currently working on two projects, one in Boise, Idaho, and the other at the Sonoma Clean Power Headquarters in Santa Rosa, California. So, the artwork is inspired by a few things. So, through the artwork, they want to celebrate the natural habitat of the Preserve itself. And they also are taking their inspiration for the sculpture from the agricultural history of the Sacramento Basin area. So to do this, they want to create an abstracted image of the sapling rootstock of a pistachio tree. They chose this image because it symbolizes and honors the history of agriculture, which was the heart of Elk Grove's early economic boom. They chose this pistachio tree sapling, this very specific tree, because of its relationship to the Sacramento Valley. In fact, in the late 1940s, a local farmer, Elmer Rule, decided to plant a few trees, pistachio trees, on his family land. And he became what many consider to be the pioneering father of the California pistachio industry. Today, 90% of US production of pistachios is grown in California. And we do have pistachio trees planted in the Preserve in Elk Grove. So the artists believe that the imagery of this rootstock, which is storing energy and nutrition to provide to its leaves and its seed pods, is this perfect metaphor to represent and express the strength and the growth of the Elk Grove community. So on the right of this image, of course, is this rootstock sapling. Next slide Lana. So what you're looking at at the right is the abstraction of this sapling and the sculpture itself. So, the lower part is the rootstock and the upper part, of course, are the leaves. So you can go to the next slide. The sculpture is quite large. It's 18 feet tall. The top part of the sculpture is eight feet and the bottom part, the rootstock, is 10 feet tall. You can see that the leaves themselves are six feet long and if you place them in the end, the diameter of the top part of the sculpture will be 13 feet. And of course, this is a kinetic sculpture, so it's meant to move. And I'll show you a little video in just a second. The materials that they're proposing are brushed stainless steel and powder-coated stainless steel. They haven't come to a conclusion yet on the colors, but they'll be working on that in their final design. Next slide. So, the top components will all spin. Each one will spin independently of one another with the wind. As well as you'll see the neck of the piece, that also spins with the wind. Go to the next slide. Do you want to play the video? Here we go. So you can get a sense of what it, what it will look like in action. I will say that the sculpture is located at the major entrance to the Reserve on Lots Parkway and Big Horn. So this is just an illustration of some of the different colors that the artists have been considering. And, you know, they'll be working with the commission to sort of finalize that in the next phase of the project if it's approved. If you go to the next slide. So, again, the panel and the commission unanimously agreed on this project proposal. They really felt strongly that the conceptual approach was so specific to Elk Grove and very compelling. And the scale is just right for the site, you know, it'll be on that corner and will really frame the entrance to the park. And they felt like its relationship to the site is very effective and dynamic. And, but they do recommend, they did recommend, both the commission and panel, that the artists continue to evolve their design so that it's more visually connected to the concept. And again, as I mentioned earlier, that they, they sort of think through those surface colors. But the artists will work with the commission to do that and the basic concept of the project will not substantially change. So I, again, would like to invite the artists, Sayori and Jonathan, if they're on the line, into the conversation and Lana and myself and the artists can answer any of your questions. And Sayori and Jonathan, I don't know if you have any comments to make.
Hi, we're here.
We're here. No, again, we have to agree with Martin. He did an amazing job describing it. You know, the only thing I would say with the kinetic movement is that it doesn't so much as spin, which, you used that word, but they kind of float and move. You know, it's a very kind of unusual movement in terms of kinetic art. But that would be the only thing I would add to that.
Good, thank you. So are there any questions?
Mayor, this is Councilman Hume.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Soon, this is Councilman Soon.
Councilman Humes wants to speak too, but go ahead Derek.
Oh my goodness. Anyway, I just wanted to commend the artist. I liked it, the theme and the look, but seeing the kinetic energy or movement on it, it just, that's incredible. I love it. I love the fact that it just doesn't spin. It actually kind of floats around and there's different, you know, different points that it can rotate around. Anyway, very well done. Thank you.
No, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I want to add to that, that seeing the kinetic movement really takes this up to a whole nother level. But a couple of things that I would like to add is, one, and I don't know if this was intentional either by the artists or by the commission or by, it just happened by happenstance, but this, to me, is really amazing because this art piece completes the four elements on this site. And so this obviously represents earth and then the aquatic center and the splash spray ground represents water. The cloud sculpture at the other end of Big Horn represents air and then we have the fire in the promenade area at the civic center. And so I think that's a really neat, potentially coincidental aspect. One thing that I would like to say that I did appreciate about this artwork and so I would caution the artists and Shelley and Lana, you can take this with you and maybe carry this on to the commission, is not to make it blend in so much with the, I think it evokes nature. I mean, you looked at, I looked at the original attachment in our staff report and it's obvious what it is meant to represent. I didn't know it was a pistachio sapling necessarily, but obviously the leaves evoke nature. But what's nice is that that starkness of it really makes it stand out against the green canopy of the true nature. And so I really, really, I think this might be one of my favorite pieces for the site yet.
Great.
Thank you for the comment.
This is Mayor Lee. Is there, I know the jury's still out, the Art Commission hasn't made a decision, but am I sensing that there's a tendency to lean towards the sculpture with the green leaves?
Go ahead. So the Arts, so the Arts Commission has just given the direction in the panel too for the artist to explore other kinds of surface materials. So, but they were leaning originally, I think, well, actually, it was the panel that was leaning originally towards the one on the far right, the one that's all browns.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. But, but they're, you know, the commission said, "We just want the artist to work through some other ideas and come back to us."
Yeah, I mean, for me, you know, my two favorite, obviously, are the, the one in the middle and also the one on the left. And after your explanation of it, it actually adds more meaning to it. So I really appreciated that.
Well, if there aren't any other questions, we just ask for your approval of these two projects.
All right.
There's no public comment on this item, I would happily move approval.
Okay. It's Mr. Clerk, I want to go and open for a public comment. Is there any members of the public side to speak?
Jason, are you muted?
You better believe I was. There's, to recap one more time, no written comments were submitted for item 10.1 and we do not have any requests to dial in. So there's no further public comment on item 10.1.
Excellent. Again, go ahead and close public comment and I believe I heard a motion in a second.
Motion by Hume, second by Soon.
Okay, let's go ahead and, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I was waiting for the deliberation part rather than the questions on the front end, but wanted to commend the artist and this obviously is, was mentioned so elegantly by Councilman Hume, that this definitely ties everything together and really completes that whole project. It's, I can't wait to see it. Been out there to check out the construction and it's coming along nicely and it's more grand on the amount of work that's being done there than I even imagined from the forecasting. And I think this is just going to really, really set off the accents to the whole project and want to thank the Arts Commission and our staff for helping pull this together. It's just going to be, it just gets more and more beautiful every time I go out there. So, thank you everyone.
Welcome.
All right, thank you Vice Mayor. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion, a second, roll call please.
And for that roll call vote on the resolution of item 10.1, I'll be starting with Councilmember Wen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Yes.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And with that, with a 5-0 vote, the resolution of item 10.1 will pass.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And without further ado, that will take us on to item 10.2, Consider an Ordinance Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 12.08, Construction in Streets to Update and Clarify the City's Requirements for Persons Performing Construction Within the Public Rightofway.
All right, thank you Jason. Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Jeff Warner and I'm the Engineering Services Manager for the Public Works Department. Item 10.2 is an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 12.08, Construction in Streets, as Jason just mentioned, to update and clarify the city's requirements for persons performing construction within the public right-of-way. Chapter 12.08 establishes the city's rules and regulations for the performance of construction within public right-of-way. The code also establishes requirements for retaining an encroachment permit from the city prior to performing work. Encroachment permits are the mechanism for city staff to review the proposed work and issue conditions, including lane closures and traffic control plans, excavations and trench cut fees, and work schedules. The encroachment permit is also the mechanism for staff to collect the various deposits, fees, and proof of insurance established by the municipal code. The current code language was adopted from Sacramento County upon incorporation of the city on July 1, 2000. The changes being proposed to Chapter 12.08 will update and clarify the city's encroachment permit warranty and deposit requirements, as well as the allowable timeframes for performing the work under an encroachment permit. In January 2020, public works staff performed an in-depth review of the city's policies and procedures on the issuance of encroachment permits. After laying out the city's procedures, staff reached out to the cities of Roseville, Folsom, Lincoln, and Rancho Cordova and gathered information on their encroachment permit process. A subsequent comparison showed that Elk Grove's practices were similar to those of the neighboring jurisdictions. The overall results of the analysis showed the need to update the city's encroachment permit application forms, develop written encroachment permit issuance procedures, and update Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 12.08. Items A and B are intended to streamline the city's application process using updated application forms that eliminate redundant and confusing information, clarify permit requirements, and provide staff with an easy-to-follow written procedure for the issuance of permits. Item C is the updated municipal code. The primary change to the code is the distinction between a performance guarantee and a performance deposit. A performance guarantee requires the contractor to warrant that the work performed within the public right-of-way shall be free from defects such as cracking and settlement for a period of one year after completion of the work. The guarantee requires the contractor to repair or resurface the work to eliminate any failures that occur within the one-year warranty period. The performance deposit is a security, I'm sorry, on the other hand, the performance deposit is a security, such as a surety bond, cash, or check that is payable to the City of Elk Grove in case a contractor fails to perform necessary repairs to the work, which must then be repaired by the city. Both of these are already requirements in the current version of the code and the new code language adds a paragraph to provide a clear distinction between the two requirements. Other changes in the code listed for you here provide clarification on additional requirements, including the allowable timeframes of an encroachment permit and reference to applicable state laws and requirements that provide certain exemptions for public agencies. We should note that the duration of a performance guarantee has always been one year and the first change listed here for the duration of a performance deposit simply aligns with that requirement. Furthermore, the proposed code language allows the city to return 90% of the deposit upon completion of the work, with only 10% retained to protect the city against damage during the one-year warranty period. Alternative actions available to the city council include not adopting the ordinance or asking staff to make additional changes to the code. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the ordinance as written, allowing for the changes in the code to move forward and become effective 30 days after its adoption. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing that there are no questions, let's go ahead and open for a public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any members of the public side to speak?
And for item 10.2, no public comments were received. There were written comments prior to the meeting, nor do I have any call-ins for this item. So that concludes public comment on item 10.2.
Okay, again, go ahead and close public comment and council deliberation and direction.
Mr. Mayor, this is Hume. I will move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 12.08, Construction in Streets, to update and clarify the city's requirements for persons performing construction within the public right-of-way.
Okay, you got a motion. Okay, there's a second by the Vice Mayor. All right, roll call vote please.
And for the vote on the ordinance of item 10.2, the roll call vote will start with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
The ordinance of item 10.2 will pass, 5-0.
Okay, all right, let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to our last item, the item 10.3, Review of the City Council Ad-Hoc Committees. Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. As we touched base at the beginning of the agenda, this is just to review the ad hoc committees to continue on in their, as ad hoc committees. The actual appointments will be a matter of consideration on the December 9th agenda or as determined in or as determined at that time, if it gets pushed forward or anything of that nature. So this is really just looking at the actual ad hoc committees themselves. This is a policy that was established under the City Council norms and procedures manual to review these in November in order to kind of set the stage for how those appointments would play out at the meeting in December. If you take no action on these, what will happen is the ad hoc committees will continue to exist until we do the review in November of 2021. If you do wish to dissolve any of these ad hoc committees, we would ask of staff if you can do that by motion and second and name out those committees if there are any that have concluded their service for what they were needed for. And that's all that.
Okay, thank you. There, want to go ahead and open for a public comment to any members of public senate to speak?
And again, for this item as well, for 10.3, there were no written comments previously submitted and no one has requested to be dialed in for the meeting. So that concludes public comment on item 10.3.
Okay, going to go ahead and close public comment, council deliberation and direction. Members?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Hume. I just have a quick question. Jason, I didn't see the audit committee listed that Vice Mayor Detrick and I currently sit upon. Is that considered an ad hoc committee?
For the, thank you, Councilmember Hume, for that, the, both the Affordable Housing Committee and the Audit Committee, those have been substantiated as standing committees. And so we do agendize those, they are items that are there. If you do wish to make any changes to those, we will have the review of both of those committees at the December meeting and that's something that could be done by action of the City Council if any adjustments wanted to be made in that regard.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, I think my feeling is let's, let's just wait until December because I don't see anything that's going to be groundbreaking between this meeting and the December 9th meeting. Members, thoughts?
I agree.
Okay, we've got an agreement with the Vice Mayor. I think we need one more for our consensus. Anyone daring to do that?
I just have a question. I just have a question about the city of Sacramento. Did we, did we need that? I mean, I know why we needed the county, but I didn't know if that one is still relevant. I mean, why Sacramento, why just Sacramento then? I mean, why not other cities too, for that matter?
I think, I think the logic is because Sacramento shares a boundary with the city of Elk Grove. The reason being there's a neighborhood association right on the border that is, have issued questions and not knowing or not sure as to which city is actually responsible for some of the issues that they raised. And so I think that was the logic behind it and that's the reason why it was established.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with leaving things as is.
Okay, all right, we got three. Is that enough? Mr. Lindgren?
That is enough from the staff perspective. We can keep them on the books.
Okay, all right, that being the case, thank you, everyone. Thank you, members, and let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:33 PM on November the 18th, 2020. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.